Good evening, Camarillo residents. I'm David Maron with the League of Women Voters. Welcome to tonight's forum with the candidates for Camarillo City Council District Five. We are going to do opening statements in a moment, followed by responses to the questions you submitted when you registered, and we'll follow that up with closing statements. At this time, it's my privilege to introduce to you the president of the League of Women Voters Ventura County, Kathy Morgan.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. Thank you to our panelists as well. It's so nice to have you. The League of Women Voters was founded in nineteen twenty with the mission of educating a new group of voters, women, who are granted the right to vote nationwide with the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment sixteen, six months later. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization committed to providing voters with factual, nonbiased information, and as such, does not support a particular candidate or political party. The League today continues with the mission of empowering voters and defending democracy by registering voters, providing information about the candidates and the issues, getting out the vote, and supporting fair and transparent elections. The candidate forums are an opportunity for voters to hear from the various candidates and to get the information they need to make an informed choice when they vote. Attendees to the forum are invited to submit the questions they wish wished asked of the candidates when they register. The candidates have not been provided the questions in advance, and each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the questions posed. We are glad that you were here tonight to hear from our candidates. We hope that you get the information you need to make an informed choice. And at this time, I would like to turn it back to tonight's moderator, David Maron. Thank you.
Thank you. We will begin with our opening statements. The candidates will have one minute for their opening statements. Tim, you're up first. When you're ready, please begin.
Thank you, David. I am Tim Sprinkles, and I am standing for election for rep to represent District Five. There are important issues in Camarillo. Among these are water, housing, open space, and economic development. I have published compelling solutions for each of these issues on my website, timsprinkles.com. I have performed volunteer community service in Camarillo for the past twenty years. In twenty twenty-one, the Camarillo Chamber of Commerce honored me as Camarillo's Man of the Year. In Camarillo, I am president of Village at the Park, board member of the Boys and Girls Club Rotary Club, and president of the Filipino American Association. I served as captain for four years in the US Army. I practiced law as a trial lawyer for thirty-five years, including practicing before the Supreme Court of the United States. I'm a former business owner.
Thank you, Tim. The time went fast, I know, but please keep an eye on the timer. And we'll go on to our next candidate, Martha Martinez Bravo.
Thank you, David, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for the very important work that you do. My name is Dr. Martha Martinez Bravo, and I am running for Camarillo City Council District Five. Just a little bit about me, I live at Village at the Park. My kids go to three different schools, so as you can imagine, I'm really all over the city. My husband is a family physician for Kaiser, and we love the outdoors and camping. I am a child of a Ventura County farmworking family, and I was actually the very first one to in my family to obtain a bachelor's degree, and then I went on to receive my masters and my doctorate in clinical psychology. I am a community leader through my church, my children's schools, and also in the nonprofit sector. And I am running for city council because I want to do what is right for the people of Camarillo, and I look forward to discussing the issues tonight. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Bill Camarillo.
Hi, my name is Bill Camarillo, and I'm fifty-nine years old, and I've lived in Ventura County for over forty-five years, and in the city of Camarillo for the last fifteen. I grew up in El Rio, graduated from Rio Mesa High School, went to Cal State Northridge for a couple of years, and at the age of nineteen, joined the Marine Corps. I then spent the last ten years in the Marine Corps, which helped shape who I am today and the values that I hold, which are honor, integrity, perseverance, commitment, and service to others, and the love for our country. While serving in the Marine Corps, I achieved two associate's degrees from College of the Desert, bachelor's and master's degrees from the University of Redlands, and then upon leaving, I joined some high school friends and created a brand-new organics recycling company. Over the last thirty years, as a CEO of Agarman, we are the largest organics waste company in the state of California, which has afforded me the opportunity to serve over two hundred communities in fifteen counties. As a business owner, veteran, and board chair for the California Lutheran University, husband, father, father of three, and grandfather, I look forward to serving the city of Camarillo.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Charles Sandlin.
Thank you, David. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. My name is Charles Sandlin. I'm a lifelong resident here in the city of Camarillo for the past forty-three years of my life. I've been through the Pleasant Valley School District. I went and to Moore Park College, where I was a state champion wrestler, and then off to Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, where I was wrestled in Division One. And then I came home and went to California Lutheran University and got my masters in business. I've run multiple businesses in the city of Camarillo, one including the Roadrunner Shuttle, which used to operate the Camarillo Dial Ride Service and the Ventura County Transportation Commission bus contract. I've operated, I'm also currently a insurance broker in the city of Camarillo. I've done multiple developments in the city of Camera. I think I'm uniquely positioned as a candidate that's dealt with the city in unique ways that no other candidate has here in the city of Camarillo to be able to unravel the needs of the citizens of the city of Camera, and I thank you for the opportunity to present my candidacy tonight.
Thank you. Martha, you'll be up first on our very first question of the evening. We have a tremendous amount of questions to to the audience. Thank you all for supplying. Hopefully, I'll get to half of them. Many of them cover similar topics. So let's dive right in, Martha, and talk about housing. There's many questions about what are your plans to increase housing? Do you think that places like Sterling Hills and Camarillo Springs should be converted? And we'll have more questions on Camarillo Springs later, but share with us some of your plans about providing affordable housing in Camarillo, and where do you think those new homes should be built?
Yeah, no, thank you, David. That's a great question. Given that we do have a housing crisis in our county. You know, I think it is important to continue to protect our open spaces. We have those protection laws, but in addition, we have to fulfill our state requirements on that as well. And so in terms of low-income housing, where can we build more housing? We really just need to be looking at the the core of our city. So I believe it's important to focus on infill and mixed-use type of development. In terms of Camarillo Springs specifically, I am not providing a stance on that. But if we look at certain examples, like the communities and the old stock, those are, you know, prime examples of where in infill development is important and can help low-income housing.
Okay. Thank you. Charles, same question here. Tell us, what's your idea to provide affordable housing for Camarillo? Where would you build some of those new homes?
I believe that affordable housing starts with a high-paying jobs and bringing in high-quality employers here in the city of Camarillo, which is one of my priorities. I I believe that there are multiple infill places, specific infills places are the Camera Commons location, which is located between Arneal and Ponderosa. That area has been planned and for development for the past twenty years. But the problem is the what the city wants the developers to do and the the property owners to do is currently infeasible. You need a person like me in office to help bridge the gap between the property owners and the developers to be able to make that development possible, to bring affordable housing here in Camarillo.
Okay, thank you. And we will go to Tim next. Tim, please share with us your views about where you think affordable housing can be built.
Thank you, dear. I believe that affordable housing needs to be built in the core area of Camarillo rather than as of right now, either the golf courses. As to Camarillo Springs, I know Mr. Sandlin has said that he's all for that at one time in his letter to Ventura County Star, but I don't think the issues have been settled yet. And I think that there there are a whole lot more to prove up there before they should they should be able to get a permit to go forward. The core area of Camarillo is the geographical center of Camarillo, Camarillo Commons. There are eighteen landowners there. I have the experience of working with multiple landowners to put together projects. I've already met with the Camarillo Planning Commission and, or excuse me, Planning Department, and they love the plans I have for that area. So I think I can pull that together, help the city with affordable housing.
Thank you. Bill, we'll wrap up with you. What are your plans to provide affordable housing for Camarillo, and where will you build new homes?
Yeah, so for for starters, we got to preserve the housing we have. The city has a great general plan with sites already defined on housing development off of Springville. There's housing development there. There's a lot of repurposing going on in other cities throughout the state of California, where shopping centers are now becoming obsolete because of Amazon and other places, so redevelopment is taking place at brick-and-mortar facilities and shopping centers within the city. We also have to be mindful of our, you know, our scarce resources like water and energy on new housing development, and I agree with high-paying jobs, affordability is an interesting word. Thirty percent of your income should be applied to housing, and we need to raise pay of the people that work in the city of Camarillo and maximize the current resources.
Thank you. I'm just gonna take a moment to share this map with the audience of the districts, and we are looking at District Five tonight in this forum. And you can see that it goes below the one-on-one freeway out to the Camarillo Springs area. Certainly, those of you who live in District Five know your boundaries. For the rest of the community and others, we are talking about Camarillo Springs development, which is down here by the base of the grade as well. So later on tonight, we'll be hearing for candidates running in District One and District Two farther to the west. Hopefully, that showed up. Okay, so we're gonna start the next question, and Bill, you're up first on this one. Let's talk about Camarillo Springs, because so many questions. So share with us your position about whether this development should go forward, and what do you think about the issue of potential flooding in the area?
First of all, it's not my decision on what I think it should be. Property owners have rights to their properties, and developers can go through the process of trying to develop a piece of property. There is a whole EIR process that should indicate whether the project is even feasible or not. Flooding is a major issue, so that would have to be mitigated along with fire evacuation and mudslides and all kinds of other resource requirements. So the Camarillo Springs project is now, I understand, been in the EIR process for the last six years. Most development projects could take double that amount of time to figure out if they're even viable in the location. It was originally zoned as a golf course. They're trying to rezone it to have business, you know, housing development and a golf course, and that's gonna take time, and there's gonna have to be a lot more work in the community to see if that's what the community wants to have there.
Thank you. Tim, we'll go to you next. Please share with us your views about what should happen there. How would you vote? What do you think about flooding as far as the Camarillo Springs Golf Course?
I've taken the time to meet with the developers, people, New Urban West. I've met with Chuck's partner, Gary Cushing, who is, according to Chuck, is, I'm sorry, Charles Sandlin. He's the reason he's running. But I have a plan for Camarillo Springs that will solve the flooding issue by creating a reservoir down below in the area for SOR. There's five hundred acres down there. We should put a hundred and fifty-acre reservoir in that area, and we'll now take care of the flooding and also provide a clean, drinkable water with our water treatment plant for two-point-five billion gallons and a hundred and thirty thousand people. So I'm so at this time, I don't think the developer has proven his point, and he has to go a lot further before it should get approval.
Thank you. Charles, please share with us your view of what should happen at the golf course. What would you, Spring Hill, the Camarillo Springs? What would you vote for? What do you think should be done about flooding?
Thank you, David. My position is more clear than any other candidate here. I will not have a vote on the Camarillo Springs development, because I actually live right here on the Camarillo Springs Golf Course. My house backs up to the course. So therefore, I have to recuse myself from voting on this project. I've heard from both the opposition group and the developer that both all candidates have said both things to both people, that they all support it and they all oppose it. I can't vote on it. That's my position. The Camarillo Golf Course is in need of repair and urban renewal, just like many other places in the city, and somebody needs to take a good look at this development and see if it's safe for the community, if it's safe for my home, if I'm gonna be flooded out by this development. Really, it comes down to safety for the community. I truly believe in the golden rule of doing business, which is do unto others who wish them to do unto you. And if it's safe, it's safe. If it's not safe, it shouldn't be allowed.
Thank you. Martha, we'll wrap up with you on this question. Share with us your thoughts about Camarillo Springs, potential flooding, and the development.
Yeah, so this has probably been the most common question asked to me on the campaign trail, so I know it is important to many people. I have had the opportunity to listen to both sides, and I will continue to do so. I have decided to not take a direct stance, because I don't want to have to recuse myself, and I want to do everything possible to represent the voices of the people that I am serving, and I so I don't want to introduce any form of bias whatsoever. What I will tell you that I will do, so that you may trust in my decision process, is I will listen to both sides, as I have done and continue to do. I am also data-driven, and I will look at the science behind the flooding zones and other safety issues, and I will always center the well-being of our community members in every decision that I make.
Okay, thank you. Charles, I'll start with you on the next question. So talk to us a little bit about the economy. What would you do to create new high-paying jobs in Camarillo? Attract good employers to the area and also retain the ones we have?
Thank you, David. It's a great question. We have some great assets that are located in our community. We have over thirty thousand square miles of aerospace development test space right outside of Point Gu, right there, but we have no aerospace degree programs at any of our local universities to be able to to bring that talent that we need here in the city of Camarillo. Good talent attracts economic development. And that's the way that we need to be able to make sure that our universities have the programs to satisfy the assets that we have to be able to make everything economically feasible in our community. I truly believe there's a biotech, a lack of lab space that we have that needs to be developed here in Camarillo, so biotech manufacturers that are trying to get their products out to work have the space to be able to come in fast and be able to do what they need to do and streamline the process of doing the business with the city of Camarillo. I'm uniquely positioned, because I've opened many businesses, developments in Camarillo, and I know the good, the bad, the ugly of what's going on with the city of Camarillo permitting process for businesses.
Thank you. Bill, same question. What would you do to create high-paying jobs, attract businesses, and retain the ones we have?
That's a good one for me. So I'd remove the D U R T, delay, uncertainty, regulation, and tax. So what slows down business growth? Agarman is one of the fastest-growing companies in the state of California dealing with climate change. I just met with Chris Meiser, who just endorsed me, has eight hundred employees in the city of Camarillo. The Flynn Corridor is a hotbed. Companies want to come to the city of Camarillo because of its solvency, its predictable leadership, and its ability to provide public safety, as Camarillo being the top seventeen safest cities in the state of California is why businesses want to come. We have good schools, parks, and places for families to raise, raise their families. So for a company that's been in permitting in lots of locations throughout the state of California, to get permits in California, and the delays and the cost is truly what's slowing down the growth, the business of high-paying jobs in California, and I think Camarillo can change that, and I could help do that.
Thank you. Martha, same question to you about bringing in high-paying jobs and businesses.
Yeah, so I know that we've all been through a lot during the pandemic, so this is definitely a pertinent question. I think it's important to establish permanent and expanded outdoor dining options for restaurants and their patrons as long as there is a safety component involved. I also believe that it's important to seek partnerships in local business incubators and startups and accelerators. And I think it's important to modify businesses and building permits to allow for the life sciences and biotech businesses to establish here in Camarillo. And in addition, I think it's so always so important to bring in our youth. We have Cal State Channel Islands, you know, right next door, and so I think it would be an amazing opportunity to form an internship program between the university and City Hall to allow for a local students to gain some real-world experiences in trades and within the city, and continue that partnerships with the school districts as well.
Thank you. And Tim, we'll wrap up with you on this question about high-paying jobs and businesses.
Thank you. Camarillo and West Ventura County has been in a essentially a recession since two thousand and seven with a declining gross domestic product every year. We need to do something about it, but it starts with the city council making a determined effort to change the way government runs in Camarillo. Camarillo has gained a reputation of being not business-friendly and not pro-growth. We are not setting ourselves up to market all of the tremendous assets that we have in Camarillo. What I want to do is add things to Camarillo that would attract people and attract companies. They're not gonna come here unless there's something to do for their employees. So I want to work on Old Town. I want to work on preserving the best, like our parks, and things, things that attract.
Have to stop you there, Tim. But, Tim, we're gonna go ahead and start with you on the next question. I'm gonna shift gears a little bit from the policy to, let's learn a little bit more about you. What makes you the best candidate for District Five? Tim, share with us a little bit about your life experiences that you think qualify you for the city council. Share with us maybe how long you've lived in the community and why you think you're the best candidate.
Thank you. I've been in Camarillo almost twenty years. I've been doing community service here for nineteen years. Two of our sons graduated from Cam High, so I've got definite roots here. I have committed myself to community service, and I cross over the boundaries of ethnicity and and I work with the Asian community. I am now chairman of the Board of the Filipino American Association, even though I'm not Filipino. I was elected unanimously by that association. I've worked in my life, I've worked in small business development for many years. I created programs to create jobs, increase capital for businesses. I work for Governor Wilson as an advisor for small business development, and I can do a lot for Camarillo through counseling and training programs.
Thank you, Tim. Martha, you're up next. Please share with us a little bit why you think you're the best candidate, some of your life experiences, how long you've lived here, things like that.
Yeah, so I think first and foremost, you know, the very reason that I am running for Camarillo City Council is because I want to be able to serve, and I want to be able to do what is right for the people of Camarillo. I have no personal self or financial interest in running. And as always, I will always center the well-being of our community. I am science and data-driven, given my social sciences background. I am also very effective with community organizing and in bringing about the community. I believe if the community isn't coming to you, then we need to find ways to go to the community that is, you know, maybe have meetups in different areas of Camarillo and bring about information or education related to that. I am a true believer and not about us without us, and I am a voice of a mother with young children who has, and I believe this voice has been missing at the table for a very, very long time, and I believe this voice is crucial.
Thank you. Bill, share with us a little bit about your life experiences, why you think you're the best candidate, and how long you've lived here.
Yeah, so it's not so much about where I came from as much as where I'm going, and I lead, I have more decades of experience of leading large organizations such as Cal Lutheran University and Agarman into the future in these trying times. As you may have read last Friday, the governor has decided to double down on climate chain legislation, making it the most aggressive in the state of California. My company is well-positioned to meet that challenge. We manage more organic waste in California and the country to divert organic waste from landfills to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So it's gonna be all about sustainability and how we balance the three legs of the economy, the environment, and social programs, and I'm an expert in that space. I've been doing this for a long time. I live and love Camarillo. I think Camarillo is a great city. It's it's been fiscally managed very well for the last two or three decades, and I want to make sure that we keep it that way. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity of serving the city of Camarillo residents.
Thank you. And Charles, we'll wrap up with you. Same question. Share a little bit about your background, how long you've lived here, why you're the best.
Thank you, David. I'm the only candidate here that's lived in Camarillo their whole lives. I know this city better than any other of these candidates. I've been the past chairman of the Board for the Camera Chamber of Commerce. I've been on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club, and I've served at more service organizations in the city of Camarillo. I am a YMCA soccer coach there at the Village of the Park. I've also been a Adolfo Camera High School local wrestling coach. For the past twenty-five years, I've been able to mentor the local youth in our community that are now the firefighters and the police officers of today. Safety is my number-one priority, and I want to make sure that this city continues to remain safe. We have these threats from South America coming in and robbing our homes here in California, Camarillo, and also cylinder catalyte converters. The Ventura County Firefighters endorsed me as the safest candidate for City Camera District Five. Thank you.
You're welcome. Martha, we'll start the next question with you. Let's talk about the issue of homelessness and the end house. Share with us your plans for dealing with homelessness and those affected by mental illness.
Yeah, so you know, the way that I perceive this is is in two parts. The first part is the intervention and also the prevention. And before I start off, I do want to indicate that I believe in human rights and in the dignity of all people, and every policy that we move forward should always be by centering that and with compassion. And so for intervention, I know that this is one of the most common complaints to the sheriffs. I will continue to support Project Hope and that partnership with BCBH and the city through the Sheriff's Department. And then for prevention measures, I think that it is very important to look at new projects and developments and to for the city to set standards to employing local workers, safe conditions, good-paying jobs, and access to healthcare, and this is how we can prevent housing instability.
Thank you. Charles, same question to you. How do you plan to deal with the homelessness and those affected by mental illness?
I believe we need to get ahead of the homeless problem that we have here in the city of Camarillo, so we don't end up like the city of LA. And it starts with a three-pronged approach. We need to first have the shelters available, then the treatment programs, and then the back-to-work programs for the homeless right here in Camarillo. One of the problems we have in the city of Cameras, we don't have a Ventura County Behavioral Health location here, a center here in the city of Camarillo. Our our citizens, our homeless have to go to Oxnard or Thousand Oaks to depend on these county services. I would work with the County Board of Supervisors and the state officials to bring a Ventura County Behavioral Health Center right here in City Camera to help provide those services to get ahead of the homeless problem, so we don't continue to have an increasing problem like the city of LA or San Fernando Valley, anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Tim, same question to you about dealing with homelessness, homeless, and also those affected by mental illness.
I think the facts are that Camarillo is fortunate at this point to not have the most serious homeless problem. We do have a homeless problem, but it's nothing like Oxnard's and Ventura's, or even close to Thousand Oaks' problem, but it is coming, so we do need to be prepared for. At this time, I I believe that what we need to do is emphasize putting our assets, our our community assets and dollars into community programs, building a relationship with organizations. One I work with and know well, Project Understanding in Ventura, and they believe that the answer is not building endless number of units for housing for for homeless. I think that there's a great distinction between mental illness, people that don't want to conform and and live in a home. Also, we need to help disabled.
Thank you, Tim. I have to stop you there. Bill, we'll wrap up this question with you. Your thoughts about dealing with the homeless and the ones affected by mental illness?
Yeah, so there is no magic wand for homelessness, and there is no broad-brush stroke on how we're gonna fix it. These are Yeah, so there is no magic wand for homelessness, and there is no broad-brush stroke on how we're going to fix it. These are people that need to be helped. And I have been part of the Gold Coast Veterans Foundation from its inception over a decade now, and we created the Mobile Veterans Connection where we go out and seek homeless veterans and help them individually. There are a lot of great programs like Project Hope in Camrio, and the county has lots of programs, and there's lots of nonprofit programs. But the city can help by reaching out to the homeless in the city, finding out each one of their challenges and trying to address them with the services that are already available and the resources. There are tremendous resources. But more importantly, we need to identify what their challenges are. We need to implement solutions, and we need to be able to measure the progress of these. Most cities that I work in just try to throw money at it to see if it'll fix it, and it doesn't work. Because every individual has a different problem, whether it's substance abuse, mental health, or they just need a hand up. You can't just provide one broad stroke for them. We need to help each one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm going to shift to a more of a cultural philosophical question, a couple of them that came in. One is about, and Bill, you'll be up first. Candidates, share with us your views about defunding the police. And also, many cities have been exploring and becoming sanctuary cities, perhaps for immigrants or for women wanting abortions. So philosophically, what is your position about defunding the police, becoming sanctuary city for immigrants or those seeking abortions? Do you think that's something that's appropriate?
So I am one hundred percent in support of public safety, period. Number one, we need to become the number one safest city in the state. And I am in support of law enforcement. I don't know of another program, and not just in the state, but the country, probably in the world, that is more effective than law enforcement and consequences for bad behavior. I think it's unacceptable for those of us who work hard, play by the rules, and raise our families to be impacted by those who choose not to participate in society in a minimal way. So I am not for any defunding of a solution that's providing us public safety. With regard to abortion, I believe, that's what you said was the other philosophical. Yeah, so everyone has a choice to live their lives. It's America. I believe in independence, and I'm not going to take a position on that item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Tim, we'll go to you next. Let me get you unmuted. And same question to you, Tim, as far as positions on defunding the police and should cities declare themselves sanctuary cities on cultural issues?
Thank you. I am not in favor of anything close to defund the police. I think that our police can use more training and they can they can benefit from learning more about community policing. I have worked with Camrio's police, the sheriff's office here at Village at the Park where I'm president. I was able to make an agreement with the police department to provide more police presence here for our residents without any cost to the city. So I'm willing to go forward and work with them, and I'm against defunding or defunding the police in any way. I actually worked with the recall committee against candidate Santangelo, who wanted to defund the police and move assets into other things. I think that's wrong. So I worked with the committee, and I would do it again if she was elected and wanted to do that.
Thank you. Charles, same question to you. Your philosophy about cities declaring themselves sanctuary cities and your thoughts on defunding the police?
Thank you, David. I believe these are both defund the police and sanctuary cities are political talking points from Washington, D.C. and have no place for the city of Camrio. I believe in public safety, number one. That's why the Ventura County Firefighters have endorsed me over any of these other candidates to be the safest candidate for District Five in the city of Camrio. I met with the chief of police, Eric Tennyson, and I spoke with them about the needs of the police department in the city of Cameron, what they need, the resources they need, and the assets they need. And they need people. They need resources. They need to continue to keep our city safe as they have, and there's no reason to threaten one with defunding them at any political talking point. In regards to sanctuary city, it's a non-issue. Abortion is legal in the state of California. There is no reason to be a sanctuary city if that's legal in the state of California. Voters will have a choice to make that a constitutional right in the state of California come at this election.
Thank you. And Martha, we'll wrap up this question with you as far as philosophical positions on sanctuary cities and defunding the police.
Yeah, so I moved to the city of Camrio to raise my three children because it is a safe city, and I will do anything and everything to keep it that way and to help it to continue to thrive. Additionally, I did support Measure E out in Oxnard to help support public safety because I believe that, you know, our neighboring cities partnering and supporting is important as well. I have built strong relationships with law enforcement, and I was endorsed by the National Latino Peace Officers Association Advocacy. And so in terms of, you know, women's reproductive rights, I believe in women's right to healthcare and reproductive rights. And the other question was in regards to sanctuary cities. It was around reproductive rights, and so I think we just need to be able to protect women. I did have three miscarriages, and I know how important it is to get your medical treatment when it is due.
Thank you, Martha. I'm going to try to squeeze in one more here, and Charles, you'll be up first. There were many questions on housing. We talked about it at the beginning. Just in general, looking at the future of Camrio, there's the open spaces. How would you preserve those? What about recreation, being able to preserve parks and provide that for the citizens? So within the context of growth, housing, share with us your thoughts about preserving some of those wonderful qualities of Camrio.
I believe Camrio is one of the most beautiful cities in the world. For many years, we were the number third best weather in the city of Camrio. Camrio has many beautiful open spaces and walkways and bikeways. And I think we need to continue to invest, and so our citizens can have these places to continue to go to for their mental health breaks throughout the day. I believe that the city of Camrio needs to preserve their open spaces for the future generations such as my children and my children's children. And that's the reason I'm running for the city of Camrio is to make continue to help Camrio be a better place for my children. And I don't believe in developing in our open spaces. I believe we have plenty of infill spaces in the city of Camrio that need attention, some urban renewal, and some redevelopment there to be able to satisfy our housing needs.
Okay, thank you. Bill, same question to you as far as looking at the green space, open space, recreational areas. Share with us your views about the long-term viability of Camrio in that regard.
Well, I think the city's done a great job with their general plan and their strategic plan to listen to the people, to decide what they would like to see those spaces look like, and most of them are to be kept and remained in open space. But also, the city has a great working relationship with the Pleasant Valley Parks District. People from other cities come to enjoy those parks like Village at the Park and Freedom Park. They're probably some of the most highly-attended facilities throughout the county. So there needs to be more work done with the city's collaboration with the Parks Department. We need to make sure we have enough parks that are high-quality, not more parks, but and with SOAR surrounding the city, I don't see anything being developed in the near future, probably three decades or so. And we love to see our ag land. They are all my partners. I'm endorsed by many of farmers throughout the state and in Ventura County, such as Mission Avocados and Craig Underwood and many more. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha, same question to you as far as your vision for protecting open space and recreational areas.
Yeah, so you know, we just think about the pandemic. Many of us, you know, the way that we were able to survive literally is by going hiking and being in the outdoors. And so open spaces are definitely a part of the overall health of our community, and I think it is important to protect them. And, you know, as mentioned, we do have SOAR that will help to establish that as well. And I think it's also important to continue to invest in social programs in, you know, I was on the board of Kids' String Children's Museum, and that will also add to the overall health of our community for children, for families, for seniors who want to go and help and volunteer or take their children. So I think a continual investment in that, I have a track record of protecting our environment as well. And so, you know, with three children, I will always do my best to protect our environment and the overall health of our community.
Thank you. Tim, let's wrap up with you on this question about your vision for protecting open space and recreational areas.
I think the public doesn't know the, all the facts in Camrio. Cities like Thousand Oaks and Ventura and others, they, in their general plan, have indicated that they want, they have ten acres per thousand people of public parks. Camrio's general plan only calls for five acres of public land for public parks. Unfortunately, we can't even get five acres in Camrio. We are almost one hundred acres short of their goal. We're about seventy thousand people. We should have three hundred and fifty acres. We only have a little over two hundred and fifty now, and as the population increases, it's going to get worse. I will protect the open space in Camrio. Also, SOAR, people think that that protects that five hundred acres south of one-on-one. I have shown the city council that it doesn't, but I will move to protect it.
Candidates, thank you very much for your answers to those questions. Very thoughtful. We're now going to move into closing statements. Charles, you'll be up first. When you're ready, you have one minute.
As I said earlier, I've been endorsed by the Ventura County Firefighters as the safest candidate here tonight out of all the other candidates. The farmers that surround our district all support me, as you see my signs. They all support me, and they know that I am good for business and good for the farmers. And I want to ensure that we don't have any more man-made water crises like we currently have for our community by providing sustainable infrastructure throughout our community to make sure that we can sustain. We have a dilapidated sewer system that's coming up on the horizon that people need to start paying attention to. We need to make a huge investment in that that we currently don't have money for to be able to continue that for our future. And as a local youth coach, again, I'll not only continue to mentor the kids of the community, but also to help this community thrive. As a past chairman of the Chamber of Commerce of the city of Camrio, I'll also help it economically thrive as well. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, David, in the League of Women Voters.
Thank you. Bill, let's hear your closing statement, please.
Yeah, thank you. So I've lived in Ventura County probably longer than anybody. And I have the most experience in running large organizations. I have a track record of success, and the citizens of Camrio can depend on my dedication, transparency, accountability, and fairness. I'm not a career politician, rather a businessman, who understands every action has a consequence, whether it's positive or negative. And that when you're acting on behalf of others, you must always listen to understand the problem, do your due diligence of the issue to determine the best course forward. I am endorsed by Charlotte Craven, who is a mentor of mine. I'm endorsed by Kelly Long. I'm endorsed by three other mayors, and I'm endorsed by business. I'm endorsed by the West Ventura County Business Alliance. I am a businessman. The city is a business. My company has more employees than the city does. I also am the chair of Cal Lutheran University that has more employees and probably four times the amount the city does. And I could be a great candidate for the city of Camrio and vote for Bill Camrio for Camrio. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha, your closing statement, please.
Thank you, David, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for this wonderful event. As a mother of three children, I know the importance of keeping Camrio safe. My strength in building partnerships and fostering collaboration is evidenced through my very long list of endorsements. I am honored to be endorsed by organizations such as the National Latino Peace Officers Association Advocacy, Central Coast Labor Council, the carpenters, and elected officials such as Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, Assembly Member Jackie Erwin, late supervisor Carmen Ramirez, former supervisor Kathy Long, Vince Pillard, owner of Slate Restaurant, and U.S. Navy veteran and leader of children with disabilities, Flavia C. Wright. I hope to earn your vote. I am Dr. Martha Martinez Bravo. You can learn more about me at bravoforcamrio.com. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. And Tim will wrap up with you. Your closing statement, please.
Thank you. I wish to thank the League of Women Voters for giving me this opportunity to share my background and my experiences with the public tonight. Also, I got to share my solutions for Camrio. I wish to thank my supporters from Village at the Park. It has been my privilege to serve you for the past five years. And we have just the accomplishments that we've all done together here is worth the effort that I had to put into it. I wish to thank my supporters from Camrio Springs. Meeting you and getting to know you over the past months has helped me understand your special issues. I will be your advocate, and I will not run from the fight that is coming your way. I'm the only candidate that has the ability and commitment to stand up and fight for you. I am the only candidate to propose plans that will make Camrio water-independent and water restrictions forever.
Thank you, Tim. Sorry, your time is up. So candidates, thank you all. Thank you for running. I'll just share with the audience and use some information about the upcoming election, but it does take a lot on, it's a burden on families and candidates to run, so the league appreciates the effort all four of you have put in. A reminder to the audience that we have a second forum scheduled tonight for districts one and two in Camrio that starts at eight P.M. And your ballots will start mailing around October tenth, and we have some other resources listed here on the screen. Again, this video tonight will be available on our website in about twenty-four hours. You're welcome to watch it again. And please make sure that you are ready to vote and return your ballot. That's our responsibility in a democracy. On behalf of the League, I'm David Marin, and thanks to our volunteers, Kathy Morgan, Cheryl Coller, Maddie Park, Pat Essick, and that's everybody for tonight. So with that, good night, and those of you, please join us at eight P.M. Thank you.